I now call the Des Moines City Council Meeting for Thursday, February 23rd to order, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance where Councilmember Steinmetz will lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Pennington notified me earlier today that he's unable to attend the meeting, and so do I have a motion to excuse him?
So moved.
Okay, motion, motion second. All those in favor? Okay, Councilmember Pennington is excused. We're gonna move something around here with our future cities presentation and their families here. We're gonna jump to that before we go to public comment, if council's okay with that. So, we're gonna go ahead and turn the floor over to you guys. So, go ahead, you have a mic there? Go ahead and make sure that's green.
Oh.
Were you guys like carrying him the whole way, or?
All he wanted was a good grid.
The floor is yours.
Ready?
Yeah.
Long ago, Hephasus Hills was known as San Francisco. San Francisco was a booming city with lovely landmarks and amazing historical landmarks, too.
Hello, everyone, and welcome to Hills News. Happy New Years. Looks like 2123's gonna be a good year. And we're starting off that good year with a great interview with a couple of my friends from Hephasus Hills. One of my lucky partners won a citywide raffle, and he's here to share his experiences living in this lovely city, consisting with approximately 1,450,000 people. The others are head of engineering. She organizes the city's infrastructure and also makes very important decisions regarding the city's climate change. They should be here any minute.
Did we make it on time?
Whoa, how did you get here so fast?
We took Hephasus Hills fastest form of maglev train. The maglev train can safely get up to speeds of 150 miles an hour, getting me and my friends around the city in a snap.
Well, before the interview, I was wandering around town, and I was wondering what people did for fun in Hephasus Hills.
People can do many things for fun. We have a recreational center where people can hang out, study, or play virtual reality sports, consisting of foil surfing all the way to cricket. There's nothing you can do to not have fun here.
Yes, that's true. People can play sports even when it's not the ideal season. One of our many golf clubs was adapted into an indoor sports complex, so you can play baseball in the winter and ice hockey in the summer. Another popular tourist attraction is our wind farm. It's a perfect place to learn about green energy solutions and see cool infrastructure.
Well, as you know, the president has created a new law about having a plan to overcome climate change. Can you tell me what your plan is?
Well, me and a group of other engineers came up with a plan called PAR. PAR stands for Preserve, Adapt, Relocate, and Redevelop.
Wow, that sounds like a good idea. Can you tell me how you use each set?
Preserve is used when we cannot move buildings, such as historical threats. This is where we would add flood barriers or seawalls to protect the building. Adapt is used to add on to or change buildings to remove them from the water's path, such as rising foundations and putting buildings on stilts.
What happens if you can't protect the building?
Although Hephasus Hills has limited space, we are sometimes forced to move or relocate buildings when we cannot protect them. We only do this when absolutely necessary. This also includes animal populations whose habitats have been threatened. Our last step, Redevelop, looks into the future. If we want to have a safe city then, we must start now. Redevelop focuses on creating new infrastructure that will be resistant to rising sea levels. This means continuing city streets out on piers and increasing our houseboat population.
Yes, PAR has been incorporated in our city for a while now. It's not just for humans, this is for animals. We don't want to continuously have to relocate animals, animal populations, so we also move them with the city.
Well, at the end of that, I was sure was thinking about my golf score. Well, as you know, when I was wandering around before the interview, I saw little to no cars, and I was wondering how people got to places where they needed to be and on time.
I can tell you about that. Well, Hephasus Hills has decided to make the maglev the main source of transportation. We did this to decrease traffic congestion and pollution caused by cars. The maglev is powered by electrifying propulsion levers, thus pulling the front while pushing the back. This means it's far more efficient than thousands of cars causing traffic.
That's a very good idea.
And that's not the end of it. Many of Hephasus Hills' goods are shipped in from outside the city, meaning, but as you know, we are trying to have the least amount of vehicles on our road as possible, meaning we try to avoid those large shipping trucks. Our head transportation engineer in the civil engineering department came up with a plan to help with that. He designed a specially-designed maglev that can carry climate-controlled goods all over the city.
Speaking of the maglev, I was recently on it, and I was going over our Golden Gate Bridge. And when I was on the bridge, I was looking at the water, and I saw something that looked like a dam. Can you tell me more about that?
Yes, that's HFB, the Hydro Power Flood Barrier.
Can you tell me how it works?
The Hydro Power Flood Barrier works with the tides. So when the tides come in, the turbines start spinning, and we get energy. When we have slack tides and the tide goes out, flip a switch, and the turbines always spin with the tide, so no matter what, we're always getting energy.
Wow. I never expected somebody to use tides and dams. Well, that's all the questions I have and all I need to know. So this is my time to sign off. Good morning, and in case I don't see you, good afternoon, good evening, and good night.
All right, let's go around for some comments and questions. I'm gonna start, we'll start with Councilmember Harris and work our way across.
That's just, I don't use this word, totally awesome, and I would hire you guys to help us create presentations for our marina. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Steinmetz.
Are there any places in the world that are already using this technology?
The maglev is used a lot in China, but most of the, like, with expanding roads onto water, that has never really been used before.
And also with our HFB, it's basically a dam, and as you know, there's lots of places people are using dams, like, all over the world.
Deputy Mayor?
Great presentation. Thank you so much. You guys did a great job. Tell me about maglev. Where did you come up with the name?
Well, it's already, it's technology that's already in use, but it's not used very much in America. It's more, like he said, in China, but it's super energy-efficient, and I just thought it would be a great way to incorporate some new technology.
It runs on magnets, and so it doesn't use fuel. It can be fully electric.
Yeah, it means magnetic levitation, I think.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nettie?
Thank you, Mayor. Great presentation. I always look forward to this time of year where we get presentation from future cities. So fortuitous, I just, two days ago, watched a special on Venice sinking. So, your idea with how to put piles underneath and levitate a city, maybe you can help those guys figure it out, because Venice won't be around for much longer, and the maglev, I've heard very much about that, and it would behoove us to bring it to the states to try to figure out how to use it. So, nice presentation. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Roxxiger?
Yes, thank you for the presentation, and I'd like to note that this is the latest in a long line of presentations from Pacific Middle School, and I'd like to recognize the instructor, Sandy Gady.
I thought it was excellent presentation. I was like, at first, I was like, well, the windmills are only gonna give you so much power, and then when, of course, you did this hydro flood barrier, I think that's very interesting. And that technology is actually being used, you know, obviously saltwater and stuff and corrosion. Did you have any plan of far as the fish species or something like that, where obviously the water would go back and forth? Did you have any kind of design in that regard where, you know, there's like fish ladders for dams and stuff like that? Would assume they'd be the same?
Well, like you said, we haven't figured out anything for fish, like fish ladders, but we do have a way for getting boats into our harbor and, like, achieving stuff from, say, like Washington and Oregon. That's by using boat locks, and that's just an easy way for the boats to come in and out.
Okay. Did you have any, were you gonna use any solar? I didn't recall hearing any mention of that as well.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah. Great. City Manager Mathias, I know you always love these presentations as well.
I do, thank you. Yeah, you know, you guys, I think one of the tests of the quality of what you do is how concisely you can describe what it is. And I think the fact you were able to do that speaks to some of the efficiencies and the accomplishments you want to see in your design. And the thing that I think is really important in all of this, because a futuristic vision is critical, so that, you know, in a boat, you look, where are we going? Where's the lighthouse? What's the point? What direction? But I think what's really interesting, and hopefully you all play significant roles in this in the future, is the idea of incremental development towards sustainability and resilience, and that there, maybe you don't get that as the outcome tomorrow, but portions of that could be the outcome in a progression of steps leading to sustainability and resiliency. So, thank you very much for your thought from this.
Yes, I agree. Now, don't go anywhere. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
And a second?
Second.
We're doing the Washington State Future City Regional Competition Proclamation. All those in favor? Raise your right hand. Motion passes seven zero. Could I get Councilmembers Nutting and Deputy Mayor, you go ahead down to the floor. Sandy, if you wouldn't mind, if you'd come up in the front, I'd like to read the proclamation. We'd like to honor you for your last year. Yes, the pins are right down there. And you guys, you guys stay there till we queue you up, and we want to pay honor to you. I have to read this proclamation. No, we'll do the two, and then we're gonna take a photo afterwards. Okay, hold on. I got a little fingerprint here. All right, here's the proclamation. Whereas, future cities is a national competition, held as part of the National Engineering Week in February of each year, in which teams of middle school students design and build models of cities set at least 150 years in the future. And whereas, the city of Des Moines recognizes that this competition introduces students to science, technology, engineering, and math, also known as STEM concepts, as well as the career and technical education aspect of working successfully in groups, time management and communication skills that build essential future job skills for our community and our nation. And whereas, the city of Des Moines is pleased to observe the students, that the students must plan for and model the basic services and features of a city, such as zoning, infrastructure, and city location, this preparing them for the duties of future citizenship. And whereas, the city of Des Moines applauds the participating teams from Pacific Middle School and their instructors for participating this year during a pandemic, and placing sixth place overall at the virtual Washington State Future City Regional Competition. And now, therefore, the city of Des Moines hereby proclaims that the following Pacific Middle School students, along with their instructor Sandy Gady, have demonstrated excellence in the Washington State City Regional Competition, and invites all citizens to join in the congratulating them. And what we have here is the Hephaestus, did I say, is it? What, Hepetus?
Hephaestus.
Hephaestus. You know, I actually looked it up, and I forgot the pronunciation, but Piper Nesbit, Van Middleton, George Whitney, and Logan Malley. And with that, we wanted to recognize Sandy as well. This is her last year doing this, and we really appreciate it. We've enjoyed it, and we hope that this is the beginning of a new chapter where the Pacific Middle School will honor and continue this forth. And we just wholeheartedly, from this council and this city, thank you for what you've done for our youth and the development of them. And everybody should give her a round of applause. Council, we'll take a picture right here. Will you be in the center? For those in the audience, we're just gonna give them a few minutes to clear the room. I'm not gonna call a recess or anything, and then we'll go, we'll start the meeting again.
That's funny.
All right. Are there any city, are there any correspondence?
There are no additional correspondence outside the emails already received by council and will be added to the packet tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. It is now time for comments from the public and written public comments. I would just like to remind those participants that any person making personal impertinent or slanderous remarks or become boisterous, threatening, or personally abusive while addressing the council will be removed from the meeting. You will have three minutes to speak, and our first person tonight is Kay Van. You made it this time. You have the floor.
Oh, okay. My name is Kay Van, part of Redondo Beach community. Been trying to share this with the council member, the mayor, and everybody else in the, you know, the city. A couple things that was brought up by a few of our resident, I share the flyer or the printout with you. One of which is, I've heard, I had, well, yeah, I had attended the last safety meeting, and at the end of the meeting, I've heard that, you know, one of the participant, I can't remember who it was, says, oh, what we're gonna do about that corner north side of Redondo Beach Drive. So, a few of our resident suggested maybe having a planter pot, or planter, plant, plot, plant, planter, or flower pot. Because on the north end is one way, you come down to 80th, and it cuts into Redondo Beach Drive south. So if you put a planter plot on the seawall side of it, it deters them from parking in that spot, right? And then you just have one directions going south. That will deter the bad activity that's going on there, you know. And then the other one is maybe putting a bowler, a bowler on, in place of the curb along the beach there. Because oftentimes, I see car hop the curb when they come down to 81st and make that drive. And especially a nice day like this, I miss the sunset. They'll come down, and they have their camera out taking the picture while driving around the curb, and that is safety for all of us. Let's see. Not that it's just safety, that will bring out more of our, hopefully, our residents, and also the guests that comes down to enjoy themselves there. And the more people we have there, the less hopefully deter the bad things. Last, I want to thank everyone, the mayor, the deputy mayor, and the chief of police that came and talked to us last week. And that was a great turnout, and I can't wait till the next one. I got a few seconds left. Okay. I want to use every second of it. Oh, that we have, what, 400,000 that's supposed to be, that could be directed somewhere? Maybe we can use maybe 5,000? I don't know, I'm not an engineer. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Van. Moving on to Ms. Victoria Andros. Did I pronounce that correctly?
Andrews?
Okay, Andrews. Okay, yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. The city has determined it should hire a communications consultant, so the administration must feel there is a need to improve its communication strategies. And that's what I'm here to talk about. So, our goals align so far. I reviewed the three proposals and was very disappointed to read the preferred consultant's material. Nowhere did I see how Consor plans to engage public stakeholders in the process, or even if they plan to. The consultant's approach is to work closely with staff. No external constituents, only staff, and that's a top-down approach to communication. I would urge the council to take another look at the two proposals the city isn't recommending, and vote your conscience. The city's website has a very nice statement about transparency. It reads in part, "Government should be transparent. Transparency promotes accountability and provides information to citizens about what their government is doing. Your city council will take appropriate action consistent with law and policy to disclose information rapidly in forms that the public can readily find and use. I'm excited about that possibility." I've only been attending meetings for a short time, but what I've observed is that it certainly does not seem like the council is getting information rapidly. Example, the $400,000 in ARPA funds. I applaud Councilmember Roxxiger's attempt to suggest the option of tutoring programs in the schools, which actually does relate to the purpose for which the funds were intended. But it seemed to me that the council did not have an opportunity to propose other suggestions prior to the meeting, such as online mental health counseling options for students, or reaching out to small businesses to ask what they needed to recover. Back to that transparency statement. I do hope the communications consultant, whoever you pick, revamps the city's website. It is incredibly difficult to find what I am looking for there. If not for Councilmember Harris's weekly update, I would be totally lost. So I want to publicly thank him for doing the legwork the administration should be doing. Top-down management is one approach to city leadership, and what the community wants is transparent communication between administration, the council, and us. Does that slow progress down? Absolutely, no doubt. But what I see is that the council is not getting enough information to make informed decisions that involve hundreds of thousands, sometimes millions of dollars. The public wants to know where the money is going to come from, because some of it will be from our pockets. I thank Councilmembers Roxxiger and Harris for pushing hard for transparency, for yelling into the wind. We are listening, and I hope the rest of you are, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews. Moving on to Mr. David Emery.
Good evening, everybody. My name's David Emery. I'm a resident of the Des Moines Redondo Beach neighborhood. I'm addressing the council this evening on behalf of the Redondo Community Association, for which I currently serve as president. We would like to start by thanking the council, the city, and the police department for the plans that are already being made. that are already being made to help address the public safety issues that plague our quiet residential community during the summer months. That said, we would like to point out that these issues do not completely go away during the winter months and that we are still really in need of a police presence in our neighborhood this time of the year, especially in and around the boat launch parking lot. I was asked to bring a few facts to you. After reviewing the police blotter for the last five months, it appears that two of the 13 shootings in the city of Des Moines have taken place in the Redondo Beach neighborhood. Although this may seem like a relatively small percentage, we'd like to remind the council that our neighborhood only accounts for 5% of the Des Moines residents. Doing some quick math, we find that on a per capita basis, we were three times more likely to have a shooting in the Redondo neighborhood than the rest of the city over the past few months. In addition, six of the 48 cases of reported illegal gun discharges over the past five months have also occurred in the Redondo neighborhood, which works out to a per capita rate that is two and a half times more likely than the rest of Des Moines. In short, the Redondo neighborhood has had a per capita rate of gun violence that is two and a half to three times higher than the rest of the city over the past few months. Not only that, but our two shootings consisted of actual running gun battles right in the most prominent public spaces of our neighborhood. And it recently came to our attention that a very large number of random gunshots in our neighborhood apparently may have simply gone unreported. Shells found, but no reports of the shootings. We're bringing this issue to make this simple point, to make sure that the general public and the city council are aware that the Redondo neighborhood has been significantly and on a per capita basis disproportionately impacted by gun violence even during our otherwise quiet months. And we could really use a strong police presence in our neighborhood. Thank you to the council for your continued attention to this matter. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Emery. Moving on to Ms. Bree Caswell.
Hello, council. Thank you so much for having me. I am here to kick off our partnership for the year between the Des Moines Waterland Pride Committee and our wonderful city council. I will be brief. I, I have another wonderful colleague who's going to share more about an exciting new event. But what I wanted to let you know, with the next packet, you will see a, an updated resolution for the June resolution of Pride. It's just, it has some updates to recognize more up-to-date language and to correct the municipality. So it's a, it's a pretty simple slam dunk. I really look forward to being here in June and hearing you read it. Our packet will also include some save-the-date teasers for all of you. And we'll also include instructions for the administrative staff to help you all order your t-shirts so that you're well represented in June. So please look forward to seeing us then. We will also present a flag for flying at that point. So.
Really quick, Bree. You'd mentioned, we talked about this last year because it kind of came after we'd already done it.
Right.
If you have the current copy, we get it. Now, it has to be reviewed at this, at the, at the city level.
We're gonna, we'll send it by email tomorrow, but may I approach with the hard copy?
Go ahead and give her a copy now. And then go ahead and follow up with an email. But thank you for honoring the request we made, we talked about last year.
Oh, absolutely. I, I really am glad that you encouraged us to do it early. We're, we're happy to start partnering the day after Pride for the next one. So.
Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to Reverend Jeff Shamblin Mullenix. Did I get that close? Wow.
Well, good evening and thank you for allowing me to speak. As you said, my name is Jeff Shamblin Mullenix and I am the pastor at the Des Moines United Methodist Church, which has been in the Des Moines community since 1888. We are the home of the Des Moines Area Food Bank and more recently, the Essentials Closet. Recognizing LGBTQIA+ persons is a beautiful expression of God's diverse creation. We became an official reconciling congregation in 2008, welcoming all persons with hospitality, generosity, and enthusiasm on their journey of faith, regardless of age, physical condition, race, gender identity, sexual orientation, or class, supporting each other in our ministries to one another, to the community, and to the world. Living into this statement and recognizing the growing diversity in the Des Moines community, as a church, we support and urge this council to adopt this resolution, declaring June Pride Month in our community. We are also pleased to partner with Waterland Pride in hosting a Pride Block Party at our church on Sunday, June 11. We will begin the day with a Pride worship service at 10:00 a.m., followed by a family-friendly Pride Festival until 4:00 p.m. We invite the Des Moines community to join us in celebrating our LGBTQIA+ community. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Mr. Bill Linscott.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council, City Manager, everybody else that's here tonight. I wanted to cover a couple of projects and activities going on and I, I think they're really important with respect to public engagement. One of which is the recent, when we get a grant from the Commerce, State Commerce Department for the Growth Management Study, which I think produces our city comprehensive plan. And in, in there, we've got a specific task, too, that says we've got a public engagement plan that gets delivered on February 28. And it, it might be on schedule, might be a little behind schedule. The point is that I think when that plan's ready, I would certainly like to have that briefed at the council so that the public gets a chance to hear about what that plan is, where they need to be, and when, and how, how much time they have to make inputs to that because it's really critical. This plan is the one that gives us our vision, right, for the next 20 years. So it's important we get the input from the community. The, the second item that's, that's up there is the grant we got for the 223rd Bioswale. And there, I know we've seen people out, I think, doing surveys already on a, on a city or the, the city streets and I think that's great. But I haven't seen anything in the way of a, a work statement or a schedule with that task. It looks like it might run for a year. And in it, we're liable to have a bunch of options or, you know, opportunities to go one way or the other. And I would hope that we have a chance for some public engagement on that as well as that program or that project progresses. And the last one I had was, it's really the, I'll call it the Marina Master Plan, but if we go back in time, we had a draft of that plan out in August 2021. And then we had kind of a major briefing on February 10th, 2022 to the council about the dock replacement plan. And since then, it's been in the process of getting updated. So we're almost a year later and we know that progress is being made and Scott and Katie are keeping us informed, but it's, it's time for either an update or a release of that plan. It seems like we need a, we need a put now as to where we're at in that and what that schedule looks like, which is important to some of the tenants there that might be displaced over time. Phase one's kind of understood, they, they had an initial briefing with the tenants there, which was excellent. We just don't know that all things are still operating to that schedule. Anyway, communications is important. We appreciate anything you can do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Linscott. Moving on to Mr. Bill Bishop.
Mayor, excuse me. I, I had a question in regard to that, to get some clarity about what he was talking about. May I ask that right now?
I'd rather hold off.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to follow up on the theme that Victoria started with and Bill Linscott addressed also, and that is communication here with the public. For weeks, we've been discussing, I've been here, Bill Linscott's been here, we spoke at a number of your meetings about the need for communication, attempting to get some plan from the city, about doing that with respect to the Marina development. And that's what I'm most interested in here today. At the January 26 study session, you had a slide presentation where you showed us photographs of the proposal that the UW students made back in 2008. And you also showed us the, the Skylab proposals that have been put together more recently. And I think some of that came out in September at the community meeting at the senior center. And the statement was made on the, on the University of Washington study that was presented and was shown up here on the board. It says that the conceptual building massing is consistent with what is currently recommended. Well, I suggest to you that this and this diagram that you put up here for us to review and look at are not at all the same as what is being currently discussed and proposed. The Skylab presentation contained these other buildings, additional structures, and they're much larger also than what was proposed in 2008. We have a pavilion we didn't have back then. We had a very large, the, what is it? The, the building on parcel A is now much larger than it was in 2008 and it goes across Dock Avenue, which I've already told the council, I think at the last meeting, I did not think Dock Avenue should be closed or shut off because I think it's an essential emergency access to these other buildings. And then there was another diagram. There were five of them altogether, the two UW ones and then ones that were put out by Skylab. And I submit to you that these are not at all the same structures. They're not in the same locations. And so when the county council members told us that we'd already had an opportunity to look at all this and consider all this, I just don't feel that that's true because a lot of this is new. And in fact, now we have the Bioswale project, which is quite new. And so I think another feature's been added here that the public has not been informed about. You need to reach out to the nine neighborhoods. You need to give every one of those neighborhoods a chance to look at this and consider this. And I think we should be telling you what we think about this before you decide what you're going to go forward and spend hundreds of millions of dollars to develop. And so again, please consider more public outreach here. Get into the neighborhoods. My wife tells me a lot of people that aren't living in and around the Marina aren't even aware of all this and may not even care about this. But they at least need to know about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Moving on to Ms. Christine Tullison. I got it right that time.
So I'm of the same mind frame as Victoria this evening and have a same, same kind of thoughts. Thank you, council members, mayor, deputy mayor. Truthful and transparent communication, what I feel is lacking by the city council. I'd really like to believe your plans regarding the hotel in North Marina parking lot, but I can't. Up to this point, everything that has been done and paid for by the city has been done in a complete communication blackout. If you're proud of what you're planning in the Marina and the North parking lot, why haven't you informed all of Des Moines residents of your full plans, and I mean full plans, via the Des Moines City Current? The planning committee was disbanded during COVID. Why is there no current effort to reinstate it? If you do reinstate it, I'd like to volunteer to be on it. I'm sorry to say my faith in the transparency of the council has me doubting that it would be open to any citizen interested in working on it. Please begin to communicate your actions and plans for the Marina and the city to our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tullison. Moving on to Mr. Lloyd Little Jr.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members of the council, members of the community. Always a pleasure to be here. I have two topics today, Landmark on the Sound and Orca Proclamation. First thing, I just recorded on video just recently in the last month, two bald eagles perched on a tree just behind the building on the property. I was off behind the gate at the time. I just want to let them speak since they can't come here in person. Beautiful language. It's the American bald eagle, similar to this nation. You can see it right here at the top. It's a beautiful bird, flies higher than all the rest. It doesn't shy away from the storm. It just spreads its wings and swords. The indigenous call it the winged people. They have high respect for these non-human beings. I think we should too. In the environmental report for the demolition of Landmark on the Sound, it says here, 5A for the animals. Check any birds and animals which have been observed on or near the site are known to be near the site. The only one they got circled is songbirds. No circle for the eagles, hawk or heron either, which are also there. Also the Canadian geese, which forage on the lawn. They're a part of this community too. No mention. So Canada geese and bald eagles are managed by the United States Fish and Wildlife Service. So we've contacted them to let them know. Also shared the report with them and how it doesn't include them. And so we just want to see the eagles get the protection they deserve, along with the geese. And I've also shared it with Denise Lathrop, with the EIS community. So we'd like to see that in the future draft because it's clearly going to negatively impact the eagles. The second topic I'd like to bring up is in the last month, Port Townsend was the first nation in the city to make a groundbreaking proclamation to recognize the Southern residents' orcas in the Salish Sea. And they've been hit really hard. They were decimated in the 1970s in the Penn Cove captures, shipped all their children to SeaWorld in Miami Sea Aquarium. The reason I'm passionate about this is because I've been working with the coastal Salish Sea communities lately to help them bring back their lost family member. All the other captive orcas have died. There's one left in Florida named Tokadi. And we're, there's a bunch of us working to bring her back, making good progress. We think she'll be back this summer or next summer. And this is a gift, the Limi Nation has given me of their family member. They're known as the Quell Mochin, people and relatives under the sea. And so they support this proclamation. And I'm speaking on behalf of them to ask Des Moines to step up. Des Moines is a regional leader with SR3. Thank you, guys, for supporting that. It's an amazing work. And as a leader in the Salish Sea community, we'd like to see Des Moines step up and support this proclamation in our Southern residents and the whole Salish Sea community and family. Thank you.
Mr. Little, the intent is still on the March 9 regular meeting. I'm going to have the proclamation.
Oh, wow. Thank you.
All right.
I want to say to you, Mayor, and the council from the Limi, this is Heisch, it's their word for thank you. They raise their arms and give thanks. So appreciate that. I'm going to relay that.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to Mr. George Pettibone.
Hello there. My name is George Pettibone. I live here in good old Des Moines. I've been here for quite a few years. I live up on a hill across the street from the Masonic Home. And I've been trying to keep an eye on it for over 20 years, trying to make sure that we don't have anybody breaking into it or wrecking it or tearing it to shreds or breaking the windows. As my house looks on it, I am amazed by the beautiful view of the iconic symbol of this town. You can see it from every boat in Puget Sound, every sail race, every people on the Maori Island, Bashan Island, even down at Tacoma, you can see it. It's so large and it's such an iconic, unusual building. I would like to try and make some little quick statements. Downtown, there's maybe switching just gears for a minute. The downtown neighborhood needs a whole lot of love. Somebody's got to step up and figure out a diplomatic way of getting the town from looking like there's vacant lots, there's unused lots, there's underused lots, there's weird things going on downtown. Maybe you guys can come up with something. I know this is not the same as the Masonic Home, which is my big whoop-de-doo, but something has to be done to stop the decay-looking parts of downtown. It just doesn't make sense. The Marina Bulkhead renovation looks really great. I've been down there walking my dog quite a bit and I want to give kudos to everybody that designed it, built it, took care of it, got a good contractor. Looks excellent. Looks like a lot of sturdy concrete and steel and a long life expectancy. Kudos to everybody involved. The city of Des Moines Comprehensive Plan has The city of Des Moines comprehensive plan has been put together a long time ago, needs to be looked at often by everybody in this room. Everything about the comprehensive plan is long-term and very cleverly put together. The very good goals, the planning agency or planning commission, I can't seem to find it. I don't know who it is. I don't know, can't find the planning people. I looked up on Google, I did, six cities surrounding us, all the way down to Tacoma. Everybody has a planning commission. Every city comes up on Google. Planning commission? You betcha. They got six or seven or eight volunteers who step up to be on the planning commission. Almost all of them do not get any money except for a stipend for gas. There is something really good about a planning commission and agency, and I would like to see it come back to life. Something's wrong if we don't have a planning commission. We're missing the boat here somewhere, folks. Got no idea why it disappeared. Never been able to figure it out. Real complicated. Number three, real quick, back to the Masonic thing. Somebody broke in there three times in one week. They broke the chain off, they burglarized it. Give me just 10 seconds here, if you don't mind. Okay, I'm sitting there looking out the window. I walk my dog a lot. Somebody takes a bolt cutter at midnight, breaks into the Masonic home, somewhere there's somebody doing something, and nobody from the city tells us anything about it. The cops come and go, the people look at it, the chains are laying on the ground, the gates wide open. Apparently, the city police this week caught somebody and arrested somebody. Maybe everybody here knows it, but I didn't know it until I talked to a carpenter who's across the street fixing the chain. There should be some more communication with the people in this area. How come we got people arrested and in jail, but kudos for catching them? Kudos to the Police Department of City of Des Moines. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Pettibone. Moving on to the last speaker of the night, Deanne Clifford Schrod, Schrade?
Pardon me?
Did I pronounce it? I probably slaughtered it, didn't I? And I apologize. The pronunciation of your name.
Schradl.
Schradl. Okay, all right, now it makes sense. I can see it. Okay, thank you.
I just want to share some of the thoughts that I am hearing from the people that walk in the Marina at all times, and also the ones that read, again this week, the City Current magazine. And I'm just going to go back to statements made by the mayor and the city manager in the Des Moines City Currents magazine of 2023, where you say, once again, it's time for the city to have leadership and courage to leverage the assets of the Marina in order to propel our community forward into something even greater than it is today. What the residents of this community have heard does not please them. The tax-paying residents of this sleepy little town, as you call it, all want, want all of you to listen to them, all of you to hear what they're saying. And there's one great asset this town has that is a part of their daily lives. It's the open space in the north parking lot. It provides them space to walk and enjoy their friends, and they don't want to lose that privilege of that open space. So another reference in your article is that the investment in infrastructure can guide the development pattern for the private investment. Residents' tax dollars have been invested in the makeover of the north lot. Now the residents want to come here and enjoy the beauty their tax dollars provided. They do not want to see the progress made destroyed, made destroyed, and their open space taken from them. City needs to step back and listen to the people that live here. The residents do not want to be told that we have to be brave and bold as they lose what is so very special to them. That is the open space in the north parking lot. Listen to them and hear what they're saying.
Thank you. Tracy, do you have a quick clarifying question before we move on to the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. Lynn Scott was talking about funding from the Department of Commerce for a study, and I wanted to clarify if that was the Housing Action Plan, if, so that's what it's called. But he might be talking about something else, and he said, talked about outreach. There's been a lot of outreach and messaging about that in person and online in a survey. So if it is the Housing Action Plan.
Yes, and also the Highline College Public Forums.
And so is that true? That's what he was talking about? I'm not sure.
City Manager Mathias.
There are a couple of different sources that come from the state, but I think my understanding of the reference would be the comp plan, where the state puts in money to assist us in the cost of preparing a comp plan, which is something that's in process now. There will be, and there have been, opportunities for community input. There was input relative to the scoping for the, for the EIS, I believe, for the comp plan. So that's where those resources have come from.
Thank you.
All right. Will the city clerk please read the consent agenda? We're going to go ahead and start with the city manager report. City Manager Mathias, you have the floor.
Thank you. It's okay if we don't. But a couple of items. One, we had the exit interview with the state auditor about a week ago, and part of the very rigorous process of financial accountability that the city is subject to is the review of all of our finances by the state auditor, independent auditor, who looks at the appropriateness of our methods of accounting, expenditures, receipts, controls, all of that. And the exit interview, we received a clean bill of health, which is a continuing process for us. We are, for the, probably the fourth year in a row, anticipate receiving the Government Finance Officers Association Award for Excellence for the preparation of our annual report. The only issue the auditor brought up had to do with a finding related to reporting in the American Rescue Plan Act that we had not correctly reported our expenditures. It had nothing to do with legitimacy of the expenditures or the accounting for them, but a number of cities received the same finding, partly because the federal government changed the standards of reporting kind of continually through this process. And so the auditors were very explicit, this had nothing to do with expenditure of money. It was simply a reporting mechanism, and that's been changed, and other cities have adopted that as well. So we're pleased about the, about the audit, and our finance department continues to do an incredible job, and we have new leadership with Jeff Friend as our director, and you're doing a great job, and your staff is doing a great job. So we're pleased about that. Couple of other items. On March 2nd, this Thursday, a week from now, we anticipate having a council retreat, and the basis of it is that, you know, we were in one place pre-COVID. And we've gone through COVID with a lot of disruption, both to our services and programs, and also to the availability of labor. Labor demand shortages are common throughout the U.S. economy. And there is all the kind of, in its testimony to the ambitious nature of the council in terms of things that you want to accomplish. But we are, we want to have a discussion with the council at that meeting about the prioritization of activities. Because we're getting to the point, and Councilmember Pennington, who's not here tonight, made the point that saying "more with less" is not an ongoing strategy because we're going to lose our staff. So we need to do what's appropriate. You can do more with less occasionally, but if you make that chronic, where you push people to the maximum, not only is it inappropriate for respect of our labor force, it's also dangerous. You don't want truck drivers working over 40 hours a week or people handling heavy equipment. I see Adam back there. That's, those are your guys, men out there, you know, driving heavy vehicles, dangerous vehicles, and we want them alert and awake and engaged. I'm not saying they aren't, but if you stretch that envelope too much, you put people at risk. And so we want to have a discussion with the council about what the prioritization is. And then, Mayor, I want to make two comments about items on the consent agenda before council moves forward with those. There's item number five, a draft resolution related to the local government investment pool, and this is simply the process through which we're changing the signature of investments made from the city to this state-protected pool of resources. And we're changing the signature authority from Beth Ann Rowe, who was our previous finance director, to Jeff Friend, who is our current finance director. And that's all that this does. It's just a technicality, but there's a process that the investment pool wants us to follow. So that's what that is. Secondly, item number six has to do with vehicle purchases. Simply stated, there was a sum of money made up of different components, including ARPA, including funds from the city for the replacement or the acquisition of vehicles primarily for the police department. When the budget was passed last fall, there was approximately $256,000 that should have been included in the budget but was not. And so what this does is it's financial, I keep saying housecleaning, it's housekeeping. Financial housekeeping, just to come up to the total amount that's going to be expended for police vehicles. And that's all that that is as well. That's not really an item to reconsider the allocation of cars to police. If it was, that would be a, not, nothing we'd put on consent, we'd have a discussion about it. This is not that discussion. This is just simply making sure that the money that was originally allocated is appropriately placed in the budget, and we're asking for approval to prepare a budget amendment from the council. Mayor, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Will the city clerk please read the consent agenda?
Item one, approval of vouchers. Item two, approval of minutes. Item three, Women's Health Month proclamation. Item four, anti-Semitism proclamation. Item five, draft resolution 23-008, authorizing investment in the local government investment pool. Item six, 2023 vehicle purchases. And that concludes the consent calendar, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Nutting?
I approve the consent agenda as read.
Okay. And I have a second from Deputy Mayor Buxton. Is there anyone that wishes to pull in a consent item? Councilmember Harris?
Yes, Mayor. Item six.
Item six is pulled. All right. Well, the consent agenda will consist of items one through five. All those in favor? Passes 6-0. All right, with that, we're going to read some proclamations. For the first one, for Women's History Month, I want to do something a little different. I would like all of the employees from the city to come up to the pulpit and have the chief administrative officer, Bonnie Wilkins, read the proclamation, and I'd like Deputy Mayor Buxton to join them. I think.
Female employees.
What's that?
Female employees.
Female, yeah. I must have said something wrong, I guess. Employees, our female employees, I think at this time, I think it's a good message for the city to hear. And with that, I turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas throughout American history, women and girls have made vital contributions, often in the face of discrimination and undue hardships. And whereas courageous women marched for and won the right to vote, campaigned against injustice, shattered countless barriers, and expanded the possibilities of American life. And whereas our history is also replete with examples of the unfailing bravery of grit in women in America, particularly in times of crisis and emergency. And whereas women served our nation during World War II, led organizing and litigation efforts during the Civil Rights Movement, and represented the United States on the global stage in the fight for human rights, peace, and security. And whereas far too often, their heroic efforts and their stories have gone untold, especially the millions of African-American women, immigrant women, and others from diverse communities who have strengthened America across every generation. Now therefore, the Des Moines Council hereby proclaims March as Women's History Month and urges all residents to join them in this recognition. Sign this 23rd day of February 2023. Matt Mahoney, Mayor.
Whereas, Des Moines is one of the most diverse cities in Washington, and Jewish people are an important part of the city's fabric, with members at congregation, Bechavim in Des Moines contributing in many ways to the, in many ways to the community. And whereas, 47 Jewish organizations in King County of every size, mission, and denomination in King County, including Bechavim, have developed and adopted the Puget Sound Jewish Community Statement on Anti-Semitism, to build a greater understanding and awareness of anti-Semitism and to stand unified against hate. Whereas, according to the Anti-Defamation League in 2018, reported of anti-Semitic incidents were up 60% in Washington State from the previous year, and in Seattle, reports of hate crimes and incidents were up nearly 400% from 2012 to 2018. And whereas, any victims of anti-Semitism in Des Moines are encouraged to report such incidents, as hate crimes are bias-related events, so that Des Moines police can respond to and track them. Whereas, the city council supports and adopts the May 26, 2016 International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance Working Definition of Anti-Semitism, which helps protect all people in Des Moines from acts of hate and bigotry. And whereas, the IHRA Working Definition has proven to be a central tool for government and law enforcement agencies in the United States as they work to identify contemporary manifestations of any anti-Semitism, and both respond directly to it and provide training and education about it. Now for the city of Des Moines, City Council hereby proclaims our condemnation of anti-Semitism as defined by the IHRA as supporters and allies of our Jewish community. Des Moines stands strong against hate, bias, or violence based on race, nationality, gender, disability, or religion, and we urge all residents to come together and support our Jewish neighbors. Sign this day, February 23rd. Mayor Matt Mahoney. All right, thank you. All right, we're going to move on to item six, and Councilmember Harris, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. So I asked, I wrote in on schedule four questions regarding this item, and frankly, none of the answers were in any way informative. They were insufficient and unsatisfactory, and I would appreciate it if my questions are answered as I ask them, because if one is allowed only to answer the questions that one wishes to, good government is impossible. One of my questions was, can you provide some estimates as to when the next purchases might need to be made? The answer was, as needed. I will not vote for this. Let's vote.
Councilmember Nutting?
I move to direct administration to bring forward a budget amendment to the 2023 budget vehicle capital replacement police account in the amount of $244,000.
Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Steinmetz. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Steinmetz, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Nutting, Councilmember Oxiger, and myself. All those opposed? Councilmember Harris, motion passes 5-1. Councilmember Nutting?
I move to approve the purchase of vehicles identified in the attachment one for the total estimated amount of $910,000. Sorry, I'm having a rough night with that. $910,000, and to authorize the city manager or the city managers designate to sign the purchase orders at the time they are created.
Councilmember Steinmetz is second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Steinmetz, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Nutting, Councilmember Oxiger, myself, all those opposed. I see Councilmember Harris. Motion passes 5-1. All right. Moving on to old business, the Communications Consultant RFQ staff recommendation, and I turn the floor over to the- And I turn the floor over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. To, to clarify a little of the background, um, and I think, um, there were some questions that we sent out responses to this week regarding that from council. So, uh, approximately 10 months ago or so in a discussion, it was clear that, um, there were sort of different critiques of the effectiveness of communication with our community. And what, so, you know, it's something we're concerned about, right? We care about that. We want people to be informed. We want them to be informed with the accurate information, not the misinformation. Apparently, at times, elected officials can misrepresent things. I'm surprised to hear that, but it's true. So as we were having these discussions about communication and enhancing it, it became clear that the city council itself had different ideas about what constituted effective communication. So what we suggested and what is on the agenda tonight is to, is to, um, we put out a request for qualifications. We got four responses. We interviewed the, the, the four, um, different groups. Uh, the mayor and deputy mayor observed those, um, interviews, did not participate since they're kind of the subject of what comes next. But the idea was that for the selected consultant to do one-on-one interviews with each council member, take an hour with each one, and understand from them what their view of our needs for communication, what effective kind of processes, things we could do. What was each council member's view of how to do this effectively? That would be the process. The consultants would then come back with a, um, recommended scope of work to bring those together, that the council could agree on, these are our priorities. This is what we want to do. And then for us to implement a communications plan based on council's direction and consensus. Because it's very difficult to take directives from seven different perspectives and incorporate them into an effective outcome. So we thought, gee whiz, let's go right to the council and understand what it is their expectations are, each of them individually. And so that's what is on the agenda for tonight. We went through, um, interviewed four different groups. Um, we chose a group that we thought would be effective in doing this work, that could work closely with the council and effectively. And also, we looked for a group that has experience dealing with electeds, because we want them to be strong in those discussions. We don't want a consultant, with all due respect, to acquiesce because of your positions. But we want them to be straight and honest and hear you carefully. So that's the recommendation that you have tonight. And I'll be happy if council, we have any other questions. This is really for the council more than for staff at this point?
Okay, let's, uh, let's go ahead and entertain a motion before we go to questions. Deputy Mayor Buxton?
I move to accept the staff's recommendation of Consor as the city's communication consultant and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement substantially in the form as attached.
And I have Dep-, I have Councilmember Nutting?
Second.
Seconding it? All right. Questions, comments? Who'd like to start? I see Councilmember Steinmetz. Go ahead.
Yeah, and city manager, if I could indulge you a little bit here, the, there has been a constant outcry, if you will, for more effective communication. Um, people have often wanted us to be more transparent. I've only been on the council a year, and I know I was talking about that before I was elected. Um, can you give us some of the history, um, of how we've kind of gotten to this point, of the steps that the city has taken to try to improve communication, and why this next step should improve that?
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate that. Um, so, there's a couple of pieces to this. One, over, I'd say, the last 10 years, technology has transitioned. Perhaps it's more effective. It involves social media more than it ever has. It involves, um, effective use of internet and websites and all of that. So that's kind of been the background evolution. Then about, um, right not long after I started, we, um, hired Eileen Peterson, who had been a communications, uh, sort of the communications guru for BECU. And, um, we hired her to, to give us insight as to how to go about developing effective communication with our community. And, um, so Eileen, uh, looked at a number of things, and her primary recommendation was that we needed to focus that responsibility within the administration in one spot. And as a result of that, and over time, looking at that, working with our, our IT department, um, we decided to create a director of communication position, and we appointed, um, Bonnie Wilkins to fill that. So Bonnie had her responsibilities as city clerk and director of communications. And she works to keep the website up to date, to respond to social media as appropriate. Um, and then what happened was this, and this transcends different councils. So as we were moving forward, we then ran into COVID. And COVID put the brakes on a lot of different activities and a lot of confusion about things. But we were putting out a lot of messaging about the kind of response to the, the epidemic and, and how we would go about that. And then the council changed. And once again, there was critique that we were not, as a city, as effective as we needed to be in communication. And then as we went through that, and that was what we recommended last year, and it's taken a while to get there, partly this is the discussion on the second about having the resources to do the things that are important. You know, we recommended that gee whiz, let's get to the root of this, because it seemed like there was always one of the key pieces in this discussion. And I think, um, council member, we've talked about this somewhat, was a divergence between the understanding as council's role in communication and the administration's role in communication. And we need those to, to interface effectively, but we need them to be comprehensive. So the question then was, well, what would council suggest? And it became clear that different council members had different ideas. So we thought, well, this is a way to bring all that together into some type of understanding, and then develop a scope of work and go forward and create the communications plan that has council and the staff working together. I think that's the best summary I can give you.
You, you still have the floor?
Yeah, and, and I do want to compliment, uh, Ms. Wilkinson. She is the person to go to if you have a question. Um, she's very effective, uh, at doing that. Uh, but I think the, the broader piece needs to be addressed. And, and that's what I'm hoping we'll get at with this particular communication consultant. Is that the goal?
Yeah, tha- thank you, council member. That is absolutely the goal. And, um, Bonnie has, I think, been a fan of this process all the way through. So it's, it's, you know, she's done a great job. But, but we've got to get lined up where council's expectations and our actions are consistent.
Thank you. Councilmember Oxger?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think, though, that part of the problem here is, is that the scope we're looking at here is, is communications between the council and the staff. Whereas we've heard tonight, and we've heard repeatedly, that the problem is communication with the public. So at what point in there do we have any provision for engaging the public on what it is they want, what it is they need in order to participate in their government?
Right, so, Councilmember Oxger, remembering that you and Councilmember Harris voted against this originally. The point of all, the point of this effort is to increase the effectiveness of communication between the city and our community. But we think that that's best accomplished if we have kind of a singularity of goals to the degree that's possible. Maybe it remains five, two. But a singular goals among the council as to what your expectations of our, um, provision of information to the public is, and what things we should be doing and what things council should be doing. But the point of all of it is to enhance communication with the public. And we wouldn't be doing this if it wasn't for that, or recommending it.
Okay, just to clarify, on my behalf, uh, when I voted against the plan, it was because the, uh, proposal was that we include, uh, talking to vendors about what the latest, uh, uh, processes were available. And so it had nothing to do with not being in favor of improving communications. It was what was going to be included in it. And that then follows up with now is, you know, communications, are we going to, it's a two-way street. Are we going to include the public? They are, they're our primary, uh, uh, people that we're servicing.
Councilmember, let me just read to you the first sentence of the, of the request for qualifications that we put out, that we got the response of the four groups. "The City of Des Moines seeks proposals for marketing public relations and/or communication professionals to assist the city in forming the press and general public of the city's work in an effective, timely, and concise manner." Did you want to continue?
Sure. Okay, but then in the process we have here in this proposal, where is the engagement of the public? We're, we're talking between council and staff, but where is the engagement with the public?
And, and council member, this is really, thank you so much for, for representing that. Because what we really are hoping to accomplish here is some clarity as what the expectation of the council for us is. So when you ask me, what's the answer? The answer, we hope, comes from the council, at least in large part, as to how we proceed. So I appreciate the question.
Moving on to Deputy Mayor Buxton, and then I see you, Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, hadn't necessarily planned, uh, first of all, I want to say, when I was able to view this interview and, and read their qualifications in the packet, I, I took notes on both, and I quit taking notes when I got to this, this, uh, team. There was too much to take, they, I got us to a certain point, and they're just head and shoulders above the other applicants. It would be almost tedious to begin to read the list of qualifications that they've got. But because this is brought up, I'll, I'm going to start here. Just on the side of, of their opening sheet, uh, it talks, it says, integrated communications. The next bullet, the next picture down is community outreach and engagement. That's number two out of five. Marketing, another one is marketing and public relations. And I'm going to read a couple sentences from, this is their opening page, not just the qualifications of individuals. "Convening large public meetings, online and hybrid forums, informal tabling activities and community events, administering print and digital surveys, canvassing the public, comment opportunities and analyzing input, planning and executing public relations campaigns that deploy a diverse mix of multilingual marketing and promotion activities, including social media and digital communications, identifying inclusive communications and engagement practices that help public agencies learn, consult, and build partnerships with diverse audiences." I mean, that's, I, I could talk till my mouth turned dry. These people have a deep understanding of community engagement, public engagement. And if you go to the packet and read this, when they use the word stakeholder, that's not just partners and companies. Stakeholder is the public. For us, the public is our main stakeholder. So when you go through there, if you do a, a keyword search in these documents and type in stakeholder, everywhere you see that, it's the public. So I want it to be really clear that these people are experts in engaging with the public in public communications and canvassing. They have worked with multiple agencies in this county, public agencies, elected agencies, partner agencies. They've worked with the, with, um, radio and television and PR and, and, um, bringing people together and solving interpersonal issues and interagency issues. They are incredible. So I just, if you, if somehow the communication tonight has made you feel a little bit insecure about this choice, I really encourage you to go online, get this packet, and read about these people. It, they are incredible. Their depth of expertise and ability to work this issue and really to meet any need that any one of us could come up with. It's, it was overwhelming to me, and I appreciate the other applicants. They were, they were great, and they were expert. They were articulate, they were bright. But this, this team is head and shoulders above. Thank you.
Councilmember Harris?
I want to applaud that, uh, very eloquent misdirection. Uh, I will vote for none of the above, because I view this whole thing as akin to hiring a marriage counselor. This is a discussion that the seven of us should be able to work out on our own as to what the communication strategy, broadly speaking, of the city is to be. And we don't agree, and I don't see how filtering that through another 72,000 bucks is going to achieve agreement. I have asked for a better website and some phone apps, because that's where the world is going, and the public wants better communication. I will, um, push back a bit at one of the public comments, which implied that commu- better communication slows down process. Actually, it doesn't. It speeds things up, because if you do it right the first time, then you don't have to unwind things like this hotel deal. And, uh, to my mind, we should be voting on these, um, measurable products that have measurable value and not having to go through some kind of a deal about all of our needs, wants, and desires. And, um, I won't have a discussion about which of the four are better. They're all fine, and I'm not going to feel self-conscious about it a little bit. And if I ever come across as abrasive, I'm a very kind human being. I just believe that everybody is too darned worried about, you're so worried about hurting anyone's feelings, and it's a misdirection. It's a way to not say, hey, you know something? We have a ton of broken links whenever we post social media. The link literally doesn't work. And it's like, oh, my gosh, how do I report it in a way that doesn't hurt someone's feelings? Well, my feeling is, you hire somebody and you pay them good money, because a communications director is the one spot you do not want to outsource. And you pay them enough money so that if there's a broken link on an essential city program, there's hell to pay. Thank you.
Councilmember Harris, I couldn't disagree with you more. I go, first of all, first of all, being one of the major sources of misinformation historically over your three, just over three years on council, has been nothing short of problematic. It's caused a lot of people, a lot of confusion. But everybody's missing the point here. This is a starting point. This is to assess what we all believe is the communication and what the component should be. It's assessed and comes back with a plan of how we can take that out, not only with staff and be to each other, but to the public. The misnomer I hear about folks that say that we don't listen to the public, we do. And we always have. You know, we heard many times about wanting grocery stores and developed properties and things like that in downtown and so forth. And we hear that, and we're looking for creative ways to do it, that are constructive, and get, get everybody involved. But this is the starting point to that process. This is what it is, to achieve all the goals you've talked about. It's simply saying, let's get the communication process started. The city manager was right. Something that's changed and came up in the last few years is the problematic nature of social media. Why it has its positive effects, it has just as big a negative effects and sometimes bigger. And the problem is, is people believe some of the stuff that's out there when it's not actually the truth. And when it's coming from what should be viable, trustful sources, and it doesn't, and it's not, that is one of the roots of the problem. This is, gets, sets up an agreement of the best ways to do it. Now, 70% of your ideas might be included and 50% of mine, when we all agree on what the best method to go forward with. But communication has changed in the world. And it needs to be addressed in a new level, and this is the beginning and the starting point. And that's why I support it. And then I saw you, Councilmember Steinmetz.
Yeah, I'm wondering if we can...
Yeah, I'm wondering if we can, at this point, and I realize this is a late date, and I'm just coming up with a proposal, if there is a way that we can use our website and social media, the city, to solicit comments from the public, that can then be incorporated into the report, so that we are making sure we're hearing from the public about what they want our communication to be like. I think that's a valid point, and, and I think that might be an easy way, at this first juncture, to get some of that input. Can we do that?
That could certainly be one of the elements in the scope of work for the consultants. If council approves moving forward, we could do that.
Would it be appropriate as an amendment at this, I'm sorry?
I, I, I think it's fine. I think we could just take that into consideration in the, in developing the scope. I don't know that you need, I mean, you can if you want, formalize it, but I think it, we can do that anyways. I, I, you know, I probably shouldn't go into this, but it's striking to me, as we listen to comments from the public, which we appreciate, but when, when I hear repeatedly that there's $400,000 available, and so redondo, they want to use a portion of that, that $400,000 was designated by the council for a use in ARPA. And so for a council member to go down there and say, oh, there's $400,000 available, okay, I don't know how we overcome dishonesty in communication, but I would certainly like to work with the council members who are sincere to create consensus. And Councilmember Steinmetz, we'll put that in as part of the scope, and take my word, or you guys can amend the, the motion.
I, I'd prefer if we just get a, a vote on the council of whether we should expand the RFQ, or the scope of work, to include solicitations on our website and on social media for public input on increasing communication. I think that would be.
If I could just make a quick comment here.
Please do.
I'm looking at the, the submittal that we got from CONSOR, and in that, they indicate that they have a core team that's been selected for this project, and they note one of the things, one of their tasks would be facilitation of stakeholder interviews, advisory boards, and focus groups with the public. So, as well as elected officials, community, agency leaders, service providers, and local organizations. So at this point, I believe that they've already proposed that, so we don't need to make an additional motion.
And I would say that we've conveyed the message that we want to definitely make sure that's included, so I think that's, you know, verified that way.
Okay, fantastic. Then I, then I withdraw my amendment.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay, I will start with you, Councilmember Oxegar, and then we'll move to you, Councilmember Harris.
Well, I think the public is, I, I think skeptical at best as to whether or not this is going to get accomplished, and I think writing it into the proposal here, as Councilmember Steinmetz proposed, I think is valuable in letting the public know that we intend to do this. So I would, I would entertain, you know, Councilmember Steinmetz's motion unless he wishes to restate it, but communication-wise, it's sending a message to the public that we're serious.
Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. The fact that we're sort of having to interpret the proposal as if it was some Talmudic thing, you know, if it said, we're going to, you know, help you develop a better website, we're going to help you with this, we're going to help you with that, but the fact that it can mean whatever people want, to me, is problematic. And frankly, yours, one of your stated goals, Mayor, is to combat my misinformation, and I'm sorry, man, but, you know, I'm not, I'm not down with spending 72 grand to combat misinformation. If people have problems with something that I write, you know, tell me the specific thing that is problematic, but this idea of, we need to spend public money combating misinformation as part of one of this consultant's primary duties, it's like.
Communication, Council, Councilmember Harris, communication is, is a large spectrum. It's not black and white, and it just doesn't fit in one box. There's so many components to it, and this is all, sir, sir, I have the floor. I, sir, I have the floor. Thank you. It, it, but what you just said is, is, is completely opposite to that. And, and it, and this is my point, is that it is so many things and spectrums, and what's important to each of us is completely different as individuals. And that, that's part of the, where this starts. As I said before, this starts the process. I don't necessarily know if we need, need an amendment to this that says that it'll definitely have a, have a citizen's component, because it's in the verbiage in the agreement. However, I'm fully fine with putting it in there just to make sure that, that we show that that's that important to us, because it is. Sir, sir, I have not recognized you. Thank you. Councilmember Steinmetz.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm hearing, at least, there's a pretty good consensus up here that we need to make a specific statement, that the public needs to be included in this. And so I would bring back my, my amendment if that's.
Okay, wait just a second here. Deputy Mayor Buxton, I have you, and then we'll go, go forward with the amendment.
So are they asking for an amendment to the RFQ, and do we have to reissue it? Is that what they're, no?
No, we're just, we, it would be some language to the fact that with a special, with a specific emphasis on, on community engagement or community, community, community communication.
We just answered, sent somewhere.
It would be added to the motion.
Point of order.
Just a second.
Point of order.
No, not, I'm not recognizing you yet. I'll get you in a second. So go ahead, continue, you have the floor.
So we're ju, so he's asking for an amendment to the motion?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
All right, Councilmember Oxegar, you have the floor.
Well, there should have been a second before we got into this, and I do hereby second it.
Okay, so let's get, let's get some language that could be added to the, end of the motion. Let's get some appropriate language.
All right, what I have proposed is that we amend the motion to include, including the public by using, by soliciting input from our website and social media to give us input on what they think the proper communication between the council and the public should be.
I think you should be a little bit less specific.
Okay.
And the reason why is because they may have a couple of other options, maybe it's mailing, maybe it's a public forum. I think we just, the amendment should be something that, yes.
Can I have a suggestion?
Yes, that would be great.
I would recommend at this time, I think it's a great idea, I think it's already in here, but we can, if we want to stress it, we can. We vote on the motion that's presented with CONSOR to award them the product, the contract.
Yes.
And then you just make a new motion that says, direct the city manager to relay the importance of public communication in this contract, or something like that.
Okay, does that, that sound acceptable, or, um, and I'll get to you in a second.
Yeah, no, I'm not, that's not strong enough. I, I think we need to make it part of the work plan.
So how about we go through, as, as suggests, we go through the first motion, see the vote, and then we make, if, if it passes, we do a second motion on specific language that we can all agree on. Is that, that acceptable to everybody?
Definitely.
Councilmember Oxegar, does that work for you as well?
No, I think it needs to be in the original motion. I mean, why are we parsing, if, if we're, we're having this much problem with this parsing, why don't we postpone it until the next meeting? And get the, get the language down. I mean, we've already waited 10 months already on this thing, for a plan that was essentially there, you know, the night that, that it was approved, so if we, if we can't, if we can't sit here and make up the language here as we're sitting here at the dais, let's postpone for a, a meeting and come back with suitable language.
So I'm going to make a motion of agreement, and that is that if we go ahead and vote on the first motion, and then after that, we'll come up with the language on a second motion if it passes. Is that acceptable? Do I have a second?
We have an amendment to the amendment.
Well, this would be, this would be on the first motion, this would be the first motion, and then we would take it to a second motion on specifics of the public engagement.
With all due respect, Mr. Mayor, I think we have a motion in front of us.
Okay.
And, and we have an amendment proposed to that that has been seconded.
Yes.
And so the debate generally moves to that.
Yeah, but the, and I, okay, I understand, it, but the, but the recommendation for the city attorney was to do the first motion and then do a second motion with specificity, specificity, never mind specifics, right? I got a little dry mouth here.
If you want to go that route, which you don't have to, but if you want to go that route, Councilmember Steinmetz would have to withdraw his motion, because that's the motion that's on the floor right now.
All right. So, so we either incorporate it into the language of the motion or go the other way around. So if you withdraw the motion, that's the way we'll go. If, if not, we'll come up with a specific sentence that gets added to the first motion.
Okay, I, I believe we have an alternative proposal to my amendment, is that correct?
Deputy Mayor Buxton.
Okay, so what if we read this way, well, you would have to withdraw your motion. What, clarify what his motion is, is again. Is it to add something to motion number one, because?
It, it would be, since, from what I understood, and Councilmember Steinmetz, you correct me if I'm wrong, would be adding language specific to ensure that, that conquer, CONSOR, I'm sorry, CONSOR engages a public engagement, what's the word, engagement method or methodology to include, you know, but, and I, like I said, we talked about specificity, talking of just social media or, or website questionnaires, but there could be possibly some other things, but it'd be, be a component.
Okay, so I feel like I have a productive alternative to that reading.
All right.
That could be pretty concise.
Say it, because we could use.
Okay. Motion one is to accept staff's recommendation of CONSOR as the city's communication consultant to, then you quote them, right there, they have the one sentence that, that Tim read, you just quote that sentence and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement substantially in the form as attached. So that sentence tells, tells what they'll do. It says that they'll engage the public, they'll, you have like three specifics that you read in that sentence. If you just put, the city's communications consultant to, and what they do, three things, and authorize the city manager, what do you think?
Let's get the city manager, just a second.
That would be.
Just a second, city manager.
Okay, so I think that the, the goal, the goal here with the council was to get council to give clear direction as to your expectations of the interaction with the community based on council and city program services, activities, all of that, investment, everything. And so I think, I just want to make sure it's fine if you want to include that, but the first step is trying to establish consensus among the council as to what that looks like. And then that could be, that's, could be a second step or a third step, whatever, getting the worst expectations of the community. But I think to, to Councilmember Steinmetz's point, which is well-made, right, we've, we've been through this dance, and the, the, you know, our dance partners have changed a little bit here in terms of the constitution of this council, and what we would like to seek is some level of clarity as to what the expectations are. So if we go right back out to the community before we have that established, that would be the outcome and the end product of this, effective communication with the public. We just want council's input on what that looks like, right? And, yeah.
Point of order, Mayor, if, if, because I'm not going to vote for any of this, but would it be appropriate to take a, to just take five, to allow Deputy Mayor Buxton to formulate her language, rather than doing it on the line?
No, I think, I think it's acceptable that, I, I, I like her thing, what I'd like to do is read the motion, including the language, and I don't have it here, so I'm going to ask him for it when I get to that point, for you guys to hear it, and if that's acceptable, then you can withdraw your motion, and we'll vote on the motion. Does that work for you, Councilmember Steinmetz, or?
Well, yeah, but I think I have an alternative wording that I just kind of came up with.
All right. Okay, so, so then, so then, what I'd like you to do, what I'd like you to do is read the motion, read the motion, and include your alternative in it, if that's possible.
Yeah, I, I, the motion should, under my amendment, it should read, I move to accept the staff's recommendation of CONSOR as the city's communication consultant, and, sorry, and to include the public as a stakeholder in this process, and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement substantially in the form as attached.
I would second that motion.
Okay.
Does that agree on, and all other motions are withdrawn?
I withdraw my recommendations.
Okay.
Any further, are we okay with it, as a city attorney?
So Councilmember Steinmetz withdrew your first motion, correct?
Yes.
Correct. And all, all motions are withdrawn, and this is the only one remaining on the table?
Yes, sort of. Well, the, we had the original motion, and then this is a motion to amend the original motion.
Yeah, and, and, Councilmember Nutting, who'd made the original, or Deputy Mayor Buxton, that had made the original motion, also withdrew hers. So both are off the table.
Okay, so we're starting over.
Yeah, so the motion, and, and it was seconded by myself, as Councilmember Steinmetz wrote it.
We're good?
We're good. All right, any further discussion before we take a vote?
Please.
Please state the motion, it's in entirety.
Motion one is to accept staff recommendation.
Can't hear you.
Thank you. Motion one is to accept staff recommendation of CONSOR as the city communication consultant, and include the public as a stakeholder, and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement substantially in the form as attached. Did I say that correctly?
Second.
Okay.
I'm being a grammar Nazi. I would include.
That's the way I wrote it down really quick. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Let's go ahead and take a vote on it. All right, all those in favor of item one as amended, raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Steinmetz, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Nutting, and myself, all those opposed. Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Oxegar.
Quite frankly, I am still trying to figure out exactly what this thing says. It is not clear.
So do you vote for it, against it, or abstain?
I will abstain.
Okay, I have an abstain, so the motion passes 411. All right. All right, now is the time to move on to new business for items that have not previously been before council for discussion on a future agenda. This is not a time for questions about old business. Councilmembers can submit questions or seek updates or previously discussed business to the city manager at any time. Do any councilmembers have new business they would like to propose? Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, actually, this is an oldie. From last year, I proposed moving the city flagpole south one pad, because frankly, the flags cannot be seen clearly, and it was specifically in response to the Pride Month. And I was told that the, there would be tree trimming or what have you, and I still think it's a good idea to move the flagpole, because it's really tough to see, and if we're displaying these kinds of things, it should be in Pride of place.
This is, I believe that's old business, and it was, died for lack of interest or a second. So we'll, 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 is there, is there, is there two other councilmembers that are interested in this proposal? Seeing none, it dies again from lack of interest. Is there any other new items? Nope. We'll move on to board and committee reports, and Councilmember Steinmetz, you are first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was really nice to see the City's Future Group out here tonight. I, I didn't realize they were middle schoolers. I, I thought they were high schoolers. So really, their level of presentation was excellent, you know, and I'm, and I'm glad to see that. I think there are a lot of the things that they proposed out there are already being, you know, put into place in certain parts of the world. There are generations, particularly, I know in Holland, where There are generations, particularly, I know in Holland, where they're using the tides to generate electrical power. It's not just China that's using maglev, but France and Japan have made extensive use of, maglev trains. And, you know, there really is, you know, even less than 100 years from now, a whole lot of technology that's going to change the way we get around, the way we power, and essentially where we're living, because the seas are going to rise. That's pretty much a, a given. So I think that this is great to get people that age involved in understanding where we're at. One of the new committees that I was assigned to was the Sound Cities Association Public Interest Committee, Issues Committee. And, you know, there are just all kinds of issues that come before that. They're big scale things that are being proposed countywide. I'd be happy to talk to anybody about it, but I would like a little direction from the council, the extent to which the council wants me to report back on what's going, on what's going on. You know, I can have individual discussions, but I'm not sure, I'm just putting it out there that I would, I would appreciate some sense of what do you want from me being on this committee? And, and I have talked to Deputy Mayor Buxton and she was on it and, you know, I think she got a little frustrated trying to inform everybody of everything. And then you end up giving a half hour dissertation on homelessness and what's being proposed, you know, beyond the, with the $8.4 billion that is being proposed on the county homeless, I don't remember the name, homeless act... The, the regional homeless, is it? The Regional Homeless Authority. It's an enormous amount of money that they're proposing in a really wide scope. So, you know, I, I would encourage anybody that's got questions to ask. I'll tell you what I know about it, but I'd also like to hear from the council about what the expectation might be. Otherwise, it's, we haven't had committee meetings. And we've had a couple of nice community meetings. What's Up Des Moines, which is a local business group, met last night. There was, I would guess somewhere close to 100, 100 people there. We heard from several new businesses that have recently started and how they're doing and a couple of community nonprofits and saw some of them that, that I got to know last year. And it was just great. It's a really good interaction. And, you know, I do think there was some agreement that to the extent we can, and of course, the, the city is pretty limited, downtown needs something, you know? And everybody feels that way. The biggest problem is that we have private property rights and the people who own the pit, for example, which is that dead space between Wally's and Jack in the Box. We even tried to incentivize them by giving them a height variance and nothing happened. So the city's trying to do what it can do.
Thank you, Mr. Steinmetz, and I look forward to talking to you about SCA at a later time. Councilmember Oxiger, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think, you know, the communication problems might, I, I like to have time to look at things before I vote on them. And, you know, the reason I abstained was there was not sufficient time to really study what was going on. I will note that I was in a meeting and I think Deputy Mayor Buxton may be reporting on the SCIF meeting. Skip meeting? Okay, but...
Oh, no.
You're not?
No, I won't.
Okay, but one of the things that, in the skip meeting that was extremely helpful was...
What is skip?
The South King Housing and Homeless Partnership. And everything that we were working on was presented in written form to us prior to the meeting, a week prior to the meeting. We knew what we were voting on. We had time to, you know, go back and do some study and to really examine what was going on. To my knowledge, most cities around us do this exact same thing. We have some advance notice so that we're able to communicate intelligently. And I think this is part of the communication, communication policy that we're looking at or practices that we're trying to, to determine. I think it's critical because otherwise, we look like buffoons up here and the public has, you know, no confidence that they have the information that's coming from them. So I really, you know, urge that we consider that, you know, if communication's a two-way street, the other street is the public and they need to be in on this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Oxiger. Moving on to Councilmember Nutting.
Thank you, Mayor. Really quick, I attended the Des Moines Art Commission monthly meeting on Monday, the 13th. And discussion was a new commissioner and we probably see that coming up here pretty quickly. And then the summer concert lineup and we picked 13. We had a bunch of really good musicians, artists that put their name in the hat. And so we'll, we'll figure out, it'll be finalized at our March meeting. I attended the Regional Public Safety Roundtable discussion with the South Side Chamber. And it was a really good meeting to see what our cities around us and how they're looking with enforcement and crime rate. And I was happy to hear that we were doing a lot better than most. So that was good. And then again, attended the What's Up Des Moines, which it was really refreshing, very well attended, good, positive atmosphere. And that's all I got, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Nutting. Moving on to Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to acknowledge Bechavrim, which is the Jewish religious gathering in town. I'm not sure they're a synagogue, but they were mentioned in the proclamation. So I attended the, or started to, the community meeting at Redondo. I'm sure the mayor will speak to. And I'll just say again that there is this very nice call, a device called an owl. It's 800 bucks. You put it on the desk and instantly you have a high-def Zoom meeting and recording. And, you know, there should not be any state of the city or any kind of presentation that ever goes unrecorded or is not available to the public via the internet ever again in this town. I also want to object to these kinds of meetings on principle because I believe they are outside the scope of the mayoral authority. And I know how desperate people are for information, but the thing is, when they're not recorded and you, they're just, they're always a little different. And in 2011, the council revised our rules of procedure. And there are these fiddly little things that candidates never, and they gave the mayor two just totally knuckle-headed powers, basically to become the spokesperson of the city. And before then, you were basically the person who held the gavel and ran a fair meeting. And then from that point forward, that's why everybody wants to be mayor. So you can go out and be like the salesperson, the quasi-CEO. The public thinks the mayor has this elected authority. And so you go out and you give these presentations. And at the time, people object to my persona, but at the time, there were two very eloquent and brave and well-dressed people on the council who objected to it. And they were extremely polite and they got steamrolled because it was thought that having the mayor go out and be that salesperson was what we needed to make the city a destination. And that's what kind of started getting me upset. I testified on behalf of several state bills last week. One was HB 1446, which would have clawed back a tenth of a cent of state sales tax to hire more police officers. All this different police groups supported it, but I was struck by the fact that it was just myself and Mayor Ralph and Kent speaking out as civilians. This is the largest state budget in history. And if we cannot bring more money for police officers, now, when will it happen? Because I can assure you that 99.99% of people in Des Moines, what they want is more police. They want more enforcement. They want just having somebody that they know by name in their community. And that's the single biggest public safety thing that I've heard with a bullet over the last 10 years. And that's the kind of thing that I wish the public were, yeah, I just think we're out of touch with. And the thing, I just want to close with, I'm amazed I actually have a few seconds before being gone. But if I seem ever abrasive, it's that I love compromise, but there are certain things like the rules that you can't compromise on. And this is one of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. Deputy Mayor Buxton.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'd like to make a couple of clarifications, a couple of things that were said already. I, I can appreciate the frustration of any member of this council and their freedom to express that. But I do want to clarify in regard to South King Housing and Homelessness Partners. We are well-prepared, but I've been serving on that board for two and a half years and we're just as prepared here. We get a big packet of material. I spend hours sometimes in researching. And this particular meeting that Councilmember Oxiger attended, we got sprung on us a survey with no notice at all, a 15-minute survey. So I would say it probably wasn't a very good example of them preparing. I'm just saying, human beings run these meetings and are members of our staff. I'm going to mention that in a few minutes. And I just, people try hard. People in the city are trying hard. We are all trying hard. Also want to read briefly from the RCWs and the role of mayor. There's all the things that you already know. But the mayor also, as far as his rights and privileges as a council member, shall be recognized as the head of the city for ceremonial purposes and by the governor for purposes of military law. So there is a little bit more given to a mayor. And if you Google the role, this is what you Google if you want to do it. You Google the role of a mayor in a council-manager city. That's what you Google. And a lot of cities call him the face of the city for ceremony, you know, they have a lot of extra little duties. So I just want to justify that a little bit. And I read directly from the RCW just a moment ago. Okay, moving on. I, this last couple of weeks, I think I've met with more people, organizations and colleagues than any two weeks since I was elected, except for when I go doorbelling. I went to Olympia for a couple of days and I, I would say mostly the, a lot of these meetings, besides enjoying the public and being a cheerleader, advocated mostly regarding airport issues and economic development issues and for resource for infrastructure products, especially, projects, infrastructure projects, especially in Olympia with our legislators. Then really moving forward to something I'm more thankful. I am thankful. I'm not thankful just because I've developed that in my life. I'm thankful for this position and this place and this time in our city. I'm thankful for these colleagues, for our staff, for our community, for encouraging, supportive, passionate, energetic and helpful citizens. I am not kidding. And, and the colleagues and staff, all of these people that serve here and are involved, they're passionate. We do this because we're passionate. We had a community meeting last night, primarily of business people in the, in the Marina District. There was excitement, excitement about the businesses, excitement about the city, excitement about where we're headed. The, my, most of the colleagues here were there, the mayor was there, Councilmember Steinmetz, Councilmember Oxiger, Councilmember Nutting, the city, the mayor, the city manager was there, gave a presentation. So positive. When I was in Olympia, it was positive. When I was in Redondo, we had that meeting, it was positive. Pacific Ridge, we met with citizens, it was positive. North Hill, positive. Individuals that I've met in the last couple of weeks, positive, positive, positive. And, you know, I could be accused of looking at the world through rose-colored glasses, but I'm telling you, I feel energized. Is there negative? Yes. Because again, we are humans. This staff is full of human beings. You, we, I, I elect these people too. They're people. We're people. We make mistakes. We forget things. We get tired. We're mis or uninformed. There's not enough resource. We're too tired. But through the smoke, I just want to say, we all got this. You got this, the citizens, we've got this. We can move forward and make a vibrant, exciting place to live, work and play. We got it together. We got it. Okay? Good, good, good.
Thank you, thank you, Deputy Mayor Buxton. The first order I have is, March 7th is the anniversary of when we had one of our officers, Stephen J. Underwood, murdered. And traditionally, the way we've honored that is we've donated $1,000 annually from the Hearts and Minds Fund to, to the Des Moines Scholarship, for his particular scholarship. And I'd like to make a motion that we do that thousand again.
Second.
And I have a second. Any discussion before I take a vote? All those in favor, motion passes six, zero. All right. Couple, couple, couple comments. The packet provides quality information. It's in-depth and each and every one of us should be challenged to read it, read it completely and know that there'll be votes and so forth in it. I felt it was very comprehensive and complete and I completely disagree with my colleague, Councilmember Oxiger, in that regard. As far as city presentations, yes, I believe it's been and, and historically has been one of the mayor's roles to lead those presentations. Now he's brought other council members and city staff. The truth is, the, the, the majority of this council chose me as mayor and it's a, it's a tremendous responsibility and I'm very appreciative of it. But it doesn't mean that other people should be going out and giving misinformation in the same kinds of logic. This is the sanctioned group. It's, it's coordinated. It brings professional staff and it gives us the chance to provide quality information and it's specific to those communities. It's not about, it's not, not supposed to be necessarily a public meeting. It's supposed to be a community meeting for those specific people and that's what it's targeted for. It always has and it always should be. A couple of things, like Deputy Mayor Buxton said, I also attended, we went down to Olympia and we represented the city residents of Des Moines. We tried to encourage them to fund our projects. We tried to encourage them to reverse some of the policing policy that can alleviate, alleviate some of the problems that it's created in our community. And we, we talked to, even we voiced our concerns on some of the airport legislation and the, what I'll consider pretty much the failure of the second, citing of the Second Airport Committee. And we are active with our leaders and I would just want all the residents to know that. Redondo was a, was I thought a great meeting. Our biggest problem was, is we wanted to have it in Redondo. And the problem is, is the fire, fire capacity there is, I think, 49 or something like that. And we pushed at the end. The great, the good, we had a good problem because we had so many people that wanted to attend. So we scheduled another date and Mr. Emery here is helping coordinate with those that didn't get attend, where we'll be, have the meeting on March 29th. And very excited, I want to thank you personally for your efforts, you and Karen and the rest of the committee. I think it gives us the chance to talk specifically. The basis of it was, we gave a kind of overall, which we do to all the communities, but then we targeted some specific situation concerns to that neighborhood. Trying to handle each and every neighborhood individually because they have, we all have similar needs and we all have special needs. And it gives us the opportunity. And from it, we had some great takeaways that we brought back to the city manager that they could look at and see if they could find solutions or two. So it's working and it has worked and it will continue to work. All right. The next meeting will be Thursday, March 2nd, as a city council, as a city council study session that was previously mentioned. At this time, council will go into executive session, discuss labor negotiations under RCW 42.30140, paragraph four, sub-paragraph A. The exec, the executive session is expected to last 15 minutes. You are more than welcome to stay. However, council will be adjourning the meeting immediately after the... However, council will be adjourning the meeting immediately after the conclusion of the executive session and normal formal action will be taken.